Meeting on October 4th at 6 o'clock. With us today, we have the following board members. Do you introduce yourselves?
Paul Rico, board member.
So, I'm a board member.
Billy Joe, board member.
And I'm here with eternal vice chair. And we have some people here in the audience. And might as well introduce yourselves that way.
Yeah, Riley Bockus.
And I'm Tracy Shapi.
Okay. You gonna...
Debbie's dad, our new manager.
Welcome. Looks like first thing on the agenda for this evening. We have some additions, so if you guys take a look this evening. We've got Riley Bockus garbage from neighbor cow fencing. Then we have...
Oh, first, first, don't we have to do the changes to the agenda?
Okay, changes to the agenda. You have some?
Um, it looks like there is some.
Yep.
Personnel. Um, but we can do that at the, at the end of the meeting.
Yep. So then we have Recreation Committee. That'll be Amy Brewer with Yvonne Keel. Then we've got Jesse Wood. Then Joey Clark. Executive Session, Acceptance of the Minutes. Then we have a discussion on a person to clean the facility. And then a joint meeting and then an executive session. Is there anything else that you folks know of?
Is that executive session having to do with the addition, do we know? Or is that an additional executive session?
The executive session is the same.
It's the same, okay. So there's not two, there's just one, okay. So I'll make a motion to add the executive session to the agenda for personnel.
I'll second it. So it's been moved and seconded to add the executive session into our session this evening. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes, pass. So on this version, are we gonna want to go to the executive session?
No.
Okay. Alright, so at this time, we will hear from Riley Bockus on his situation in the community.
Yeah. Just looking for an update on what's happening with the trash on the Benoin property. I came July, reported the known situation for, has been known for over a decade. As discussed in July about the trash at the Benoin property. Kind of looking to see where things are and probably still there, obviously.
What, didn't you also talk about the other property?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's, that's still pretty much the same. Just things have moved from one pile to another pile. There was a large pile of scrap metal that got put on a trailer truck further away from the road.
Also, if I may speak just real quick. When, um, I don't know if they're still doing it, delivering like lunches to the, to the kids in their home. The school was delivering lunches across the street and they just weren't taking them. It was just, the raccoons were taking them. And I spoke with her and it just stayed in the road and in the driveway. Ended up in the yard. It was bad. We had raccoons like, I don't know, weeks.
It's still on the road.
I believe the update on that is the health officer did go to that.
Yeah, and there's additional bags of trash in the driveway now. And I noticed that Saturday.
So then are we waiting for a report back from the health officer as to how we're gonna do this?
The health officer determined that there wasn't enough of a health concern for it to trigger her, her contacting the state to get it cleaned up. That was her determination.
What about burning garbage?
I'm not sure.
That would be, Northwest All Waste has to be culled on that because that's a different person. It's Barry Donovan. He works for them and he issues citations if he finds the people group burning.
Okay.
So have you, have you guys heard from the health officer or any, or have you heard from the health officer or any?
No.
No?
She told me that she's friends with Larry, so. There's lies there.
Yeah.
And he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I mean, no, friends with, I mean Larry as in the chairperson or?
No, annoying.
As a, as a property owner, okay. Cause that's...
Property owner.
Yes.
Is he still a property owner there? I know a while back he had deeded it to his daughter.
He, it's deeded to trust.
It's to trust.
So he still owns it.
So the health officer for the other property, not the Benoin property, but the rental property.
Is it still his property though?
The property is...
The land, but I believe that the trailer's theirs, correct. So she, so what we received was that she had taken pictures. And yes, there was junk, but it wasn't to the level of health safety, right? So there's, this is where we kind of have to, there are specific criteria that sets what designates a health safety issue versus an annoying junk issue, right? And so, um, and believe you me, I have neighbors that are exactly like the same in the fact, but that criteria is what tips it. And so if it's not to the point of being like unsafe in a health standpoint, then. Right. You know, for instance like...
Because the raccoons basically ate all food, so.
So that, see, exactly. That's where we're kind of at. I mean...
Raccoons everywhere, lambs.
Right.
Yeah, it comes in the yard. It's just gross.
Like health safety is like open sewer pits, right? Or, um, com- open electrical, right? To the point where it's like somebody's going to get hurt because of, this is a health issue versus just scrap metal, right?
Yeah.
Or, so that's where we...
There was one file, the underfile was the garbage.
Right.
But they've been burning it.
Burning it. So that's, exactly. So it's these like fine lines that we constantly get caught in, you know? Yeah. Exactly.
Now, the thing is, is that on this, Riley, I mean, you and I have chit-chatted about stuff there in the past. Had you given us the information on the like Title VI Agricultural Chapter 1?
I think so.
So you've got that information and that's where...
Those are your emails that you put...
Okay. So... I mean...
But back to the first subject. As far as Larry Benoin property with the trash for him, have you heard from the state? What's going on?
See, that's the thing. I would have to go through and get hold of the health officer and see what. She reports back to us. So she's gonna be the one to follow up on that.
Last, last name, you guys said that, that's, that's a state thing.
It is, and we did talk to, um, I think actually Jesse talked to the person at the state that would come and do the inspection. Because it's a little above us now because it is on a farm and, and they have already stepped in. It used to be Mr. Cantwell. I don't know if you ever met with him or talked with him.
No.
But now it's somebody else. This is the person whose name I sent you for email. Remember when I sent you the email?
Oh, yeah. David Harris.
So it's him now and he did contact our office. But before he goes out there, he wanted to contact, he didn't want him to show up. Because sometimes people aren't welcomed.
Right.
And, and he can't put himself in danger. So from there, Larry had stopped to the library and I called him and I said, hey, do you have a cell phone? And he gladly gave me his cell phone number. So then we gave it to the man at the state level. From there, we don't know if he's made an appointment to go do an inspection or to meet with him or whatnot. It's gotten that far.
No, exactly. And this would not be the first time that we've gone through this process, right? And so again, we fell into the, the dicey territory of personal property versus trash, right? I believe the, the trailers in the woods were an issue. He wouldn't allow them to open them. I'm sure if you were to open them, it might tip it over to a different category, but they couldn't get in there.
So he has to allow people to do that. So what can be done?
So if it's visible from the road, can, can you adopt an ordinance?
So again, like I could adopt an ordinance that your pink flamingo is trash that's on your lawn, right?
Right.
So we have to, when we think about ordinances, it can't just be for one person. It has to be for everybody. And so then it falls into another man's trash is another man's treasure. What I might deem as trash, you might deem as your father's 1936 automobile, right?
There's not a difference between like the trailers and the outbuildings and then his home that he lives in.
Right.
And the barn that the animals are in. There's not a difference there. Like that's not a health issue for, even for his animals, in my mind.
So again, that falls into the agency bag, which is a different scenario, right? So we get caught in the state thing too.
They told me that that falls under the town's jurisdiction.
What falls under the town's jurisdiction is...
I spoke with the secretary of agriculture and they said that falls under Title 24.
So as far as us deeming whether his farm is considered operable, that is not a town issue. I would be happy to read that statute because I would argue that that is not our issue.
So I think that's the problem we're having is every time we talk to somebody, it's their issue.
No, I...
You know what I, you know what I'm saying?
I totally get that.
It's their issue and it's their issue, um, like a whole other issue than cows. And I'm here because I finally have...
Now, what is in a statute, which I have right in front of me, which seems ridiculous, but I'm gonna say it because it's a statute that says you have the right to hold those animals.
Right.
And, but then when you hold those animals, then you have certain things that you can and cannot do with those animals, right? So then you, do you really want that liability? Probably not. So we've sent fence sitters out to actually check the fence when they go out. Guess what? It's working, right? And so...
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
Remember you, we came, this is a couple of years ago. You came about the fence, they sent the fence sitters, they went over, it was working. And then the cows got out again, so...
I remember some select board members going over, they helped to fix the fence.
Right.
Which is a little bit of a conflict of interest for the town.
I don't remember the fixing of the fence. You may have remembered that. But I remember then the fence sitters going over and checking the fence. And so at that point, it was working and then now what do you do?
Yeah.
So this is a vicious cycle. There is also statute that basically states that it is an issue between the landowners that have conflict.
The, the problem with that specific area is my land doesn't, about layers.
Oh.
Mine's across the road.
Right.
And it doesn't touch.
Right.
Who's does yours about?
Shepherd's. All the way around, in the road.
But there is also statute, which I'm looking at, which is about the right of way of the road. And so that's a Vermont State statute that says if the animals are in the roadway, then you, the landowner, or if it causes any damage to your property, you, the landowner, can recoup damages from the other said landowner. But the town isn't in part of that.
Yeah. You gotta have enough money to hire a lawyer though.
Well, I mean, there's a lot, so I, I get that too. There are lots of, of legal aides that may take that up, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get that.
And that doesn't solve the problem.
Right.
The problem will still persist.
Just like the problem was probably there before you got there. So, yeah, it's gonna, that, that is a...
The Village of Venusburg has a statute for...
An ordinance.
No, it's a statute.
The, the...
Title 24, Multi Municipal Charters, Chapter 219. And it goes through, it states how, well, what I'm referring to is keep and repair any buildings necessary, any construction, maintenance. And that's more to do with like town land or something, but what, what I'm getting to is I'd like the town to adopt a similar ordinance charter, whatever you wanna call it, for the town. Because this goes into detail to, uh, say nuisance animals, restraining cattle, horses, sheep, running out large. Just for, for the, for the towns. And, and that's just for the towns' properties of...
Call eating guy.
And...
Still one going down out there.
Oh, it's not, okay. I'll have to message, make sure and call back.
If those, if this statute violated, you, it could be imposed as a fine not to exceed $500. But if the town, if the Village of Venusburg can have a statute for something like this, and some of that is exactly what I'm dealing with, why can't the town adopt their ordinance?
I'm confused by statute.
I think it's part of their charter. I think it's in the statute saying Venusburg Village is one of the people that have this.
Got you.
But it's in their charter. And again, it's just like the ordinance is, you can't focus one charter change on one instance. Or it's harassment. Like it's one person that this ordinance would be focused on.
Or you're just saying everybody's buildings should be up to this, like a code is what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm not saying it's for this instance and, but obviously this is a reoccurring problem. That's why I keep coming. And, I mean, if it wasn't a problem, I wouldn't be here. I mean, the cows were out again.
They're out right now.
Yeah. I sent Billy Joe a video and they just walked right through the fence. The fence isn't on.
Right. I mean, they're cows. They're hungry.
Right.
Yep.
I get it. I understand. But they got in the garden. That really made me mad. So, I mean, I don't know if you guys garden. It's a lot work.
No, exactly.
It's a lot work. And there was like multiple cows, bulls even. We have kids, you know? It's just scary. It's just like, make him fix the fence. That's it. I, I don't even, I don't even care about the buildings. Let them fall in. Just...
So you're right, make him fix the fence, which we've kind of done. But then what? Then the next month rolls around.
I mean, it was good for a long, it was good for a while.
So the point is, is that I'm saying is at some point, it has to be between the landowners, right? At some point, it has to be between the landowners.
I mean, you have fence viewers for a reason. If it's a continual issue, then fence viewers need to go out and tell them, hey, look, in order to have these animals, you need to fix your fence.
Right.
If we get, I mean...
I get cows get out once in a while.
Right. No, I get it.
I've, I've lived in Franklin County my entire life. I worked on a few different farms.
Right.
And I get cows get out. But they've been out pretty much every day. Might be a couple of days in between, maybe three or four, that the cows haven't been out. But they've been out since the 20th August.
Right.
Okay, so what we'll do is we could take a look at the village charter ruling. See what's, what's in there and get hold of the health officer and see if the state has followed up with her. And...
And it sounds like fence viewers again.
He puts up these, these like ranch apple things tied together and the cows are just like, really?
Mm-hmm. I know.
They walk right at them.
Oh, yeah.
Or, or he sticks, sticks fence poles up and puts, slides two rocks together.
He really does.
I know.
It's not funny, yeah.
No, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate, but...
I mean, well, I mean, after fence viewers do it and it's a continual issue after that, I mean, what's the next step for the town? Is it fining him until he fixes the fence or what can you do?
We don't have an ordinance for that. That's the thing. It's like...
Maybe there should be one for...
But there is statute for you. That's what I'm saying. It's already in the law. And so there are things in place for you.
Thing is up to you to go to court.
Yeah. I mean, that's what...
But the point is, the court will say, okay, if, if they even say, here's some money, like the, the issue is still gonna happen. I'm not really in in a financial situation to hire a lawyer, you know?
No, I totally get it.
And I had a conversation with the secretary of state and she said, you know, you shouldn't have to be burdened with this. This shouldn't be a problem. You should have to keep this eye on it. I said, I know. But if, if I catch him on my land, you won't have to worry about that one anymore or whatever's on it. Serious. I'm to that point. I can't, I can't hire a lawyer. I get passed around. And I can't do anything about it.
I still think you, that, I, I think you'd be surprised at the amount of legal aid that's out there for people. I think you would be surprised. Did you, when you called the, the secretary of state's office, did you ask for any of those resources?
Yeah, I called.
Okay. So why don't I, I, I will happily kind of dig into that and see what's available because and, and we can, and see. Maybe that might help too. Yeah.
Yeah, they told, they, they're looking to what they could do out there.
Right.
I'm supposed to call them Tuesday or Wednesday, so.
Okay, good.
But, um, I mean, they, they told me, uh, it should be up to you guys to adopt an ordinance with the statute for Title 24 while I'm...
Which is the...
The fence viewers and it, it has, it, there's a law underneath.
Yeah. No, exactly.
It's not just fence viewers.
Right. So part of it is that the town, if they have the facilities available, can take control of the animals. We've been down, we've communicated that with you too. We don't have that facility.
Right.
So that's one of the things.
In the sheriff's office, don't deal with cows.
Exactly. Like, so we, there's these things that are in place in the statute that we don't have, right?
If I see it, I will definitely deal with it.
And so...
It'll be the last time.
Right. Just like, for instance, there's things in the statute that says you're gonna take control of the animal, but you don't wanna do that, you know what I'm saying? Like...
Where am I supposed to deal with them?
That's exactly what I'm saying. Exactly. That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's another cost for me.
Totally.
And I, I don't have money for a lawyer. You expect me to get the building permit, build the building? Like lumber's fricking...
Oh, totally get it. No, I don't expect you to build a, but I'm, what I'm saying is there's things in the statute that are saying, like we just don't have the system to do that. But we, so that's what we have to figure out.
That's why I'm asking you to adopt an ordinance.
We can look into it. That's all I can do for right now, or it's all we can do for right now.
Ordinances and charters take, like I said in my email, they take a very long time to create. You have to write the verbiage. You have to have an attorney check it over. You have to take it to multiple meetings. You have to post it. You have to vote on it. It's not something I could even snap my fingers and even get done in six months.
And when you think about the individual, like let's say there is an ordinance, right? So there has to be oversight of the ordinance, which means we, what, go and fine him if he doesn't pay. We can't, we're not taking his animals. We've already determined that. We're not in the business of farming, right? So...
You can order, get rid of them.
But with an ordinance in, in place, say...
There's dog ordinances too.
But our cows are a little different than dogs, so I mean, they're like horrible. I mean...
But if you, but look at the statute, it's pretty similar. Like dog catcher. So they basically say you can go and take their animals if they're out.
Oh my God, then get shot.
I mean, the toughest part on part of this and that is it's all based on agricultural, which is in a sense, out of our hands.
Well, it's out of the agency of agriculture, so you can't do that. All I can do is...
That's what I don't get either.
All I can do is do a site visit about water. I got that.
Yeah, something smells fishy there. Okay.
Okay.
So I'm gonna dig in for legal and and then we'll check out the statute, I guess.
And see what the health officer has to say.
I wish I could snap my fingers. I really do.
Rough.
Frustrating.
Speaking of the health officer, real quick, there's a pipe that comes out from across the, across the road. I mean, I don't know what they had done when they moved in there. Did something happen with the septic that was a little fishy? But you could smell sewer when you walk by sometimes and there's like a rag hanging out of it. I don't know how you...
See that?
Is it going into a ditch or is it on the lawn?
I brought, I brought that up.
It's directly, it's directly pulled out from the ditch and that's a new thing, right? Since they moved in. I've only lived there three years.
They moved in, that was part of their, uh, one of their things they did. Improvements, I guess. But I, I'm pretty sure they, they had a, rented a backhoe from Rosie, uh, Robert Kelly.
Robert Rosie's.
And, uh, what's his name? Dan?
Daniel.
He, he ran it and they, they dug a couple trenches behind the trailer, like the length of their backyard. And they dug a trench across the driveway into the ditch. And I mentioned that to Henry Newberger and they had buried it up by the time that he went over it. And they told him that it was just, or drainage, but...
Drainage and smelling.
But in order for the health officer to to anything for the septic, it needs to be connected. I know that he didn't connect it because it buried it up by the time that I talked to him.
So is it, is it an open pipe or is it not?
It's an open pipe.
It's an open pipe, okay.
It's an open pipe. And it's not like the sewer you smell from animals or it's...
No, right.
It's gross.
And that is...
We went there a while ago and we were taking a walk down the road, but...
And that is at the rental, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you're facing the house, it's on the right side of the driveway.
I think it's green. It's like a, I mean...
I'm pretty sure it's white.
It's a white.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
And the fence viewers are gonna view the fence?
Well, I think you, we have to talk to the fence viewers because some of them aren't here.
What do you guys look for when you go view the fence? If you can easily pull a fence down?
No, I can't, I'm not even allowed, I'm not even allowed to touch it.
Well, that's, that's what it originally was. It was about property lines.
It's property lines.
That's what it's supposed to be.
That's what, that's the position.
It's, exactly.
Yes.
I'm gonna have to check to see if they have a review on...
There is a statute for that. I'm returning to...
Fence stability.
Fence stability, right. That's what we need to find out.
I'm not sure if that's even under their job description.
But it was property lines.
We will see.
Yes.
There's a statute that describes that.
The fence viewer or fence, fence stability.
Well, I didn't know if there was anything else that went along with it, but there is a... Uh, I didn't know if there was anything else that went along with it, but there is a statute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming, yeah. You good?
Why are you here?
Just fun?
Her request.
Oh. Thank you.
I think we're all set now.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hopefully y'all have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Same for you.
Grass or pen?
For us. Come on over. Scooch right on up. Hi, how are you?
Oh, I'm good. It's been a long time since I've been here.
Yes. How are things?
Good.
Good.
They're good.
Good.
Are you calling back for me?
Are we? Yvonne's joining my phone. Oh, Yvonne's, okay.
Alright, everybody, introduce yourself.
I will.
Yes.
My name is Amy Brewer and I'm here representing the um.
Hello?
Hi, Yvonne, it's Billy Joe.
Hi, Billy Joe.
You're now joining the slug war meeting.
Hi, Yvonne.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, Yvonne.
Hi, Yvonne, it's Amy.
Hey.
So um the reason I'm here is because we have beautiful rec fields, um and we had a master plan that we um submitted. Uh, a year and a half ago or so, I think January twenty twenty. Um, and then we've all been kind of head spinning with COVID, um but now it's time to start thinking about next steps and having steps forward. Um, that's not my area of expertise, so I'm coming to you, um to stop while I'm talking. So you can hear me. Um, so if you wouldn't mind, I'm just gonna kind of remind you all where we are with the project. Um, so. The goal of the rec uh fields redevelopment is to kind of meet the existing and growing needs of the greater Kennesaw community. Um, to provide rec and gathering space for community members of all ages and abilities, um to fill in recreational gaps. Um, like, you know, a playground, walking path, places where gathering, gardening, winter activities. Uh, to increase the delineation between the emergency services space and recreation space, which is not clearly delineated. Um, and to just increase the enjoyment and flexibility of this community access. It's asset, it's a big space currently under used. It's a couple ball fields, basketball court, um which is doubling as people ball. So here's the update. We submitted the master plan twenty twenty in January. We built a cute little dog dog pit, um which I encourage you all to explore with uh the young people or even your people. Um, and we striped the people ball court onto the basketball court. All of that is being utilized, so it's been kind of fun. Um. And just trying to figure out what are next steps when we ask the question, cause I'm a novice, the answer is engineering is scoping. Which um. Probably can't happen without support or encouragement from from the board and the town. Um, and um I had a couple conversations with um some engineers. And there would be things like stormwater permits, which would be needed, wetlands delineation. Um, if we move forward on the second ball field, which would be in the back um of this building. Um, we need Act two fifty, um and then there's an imaginary um part up at the corner, which would be on village property. Um, and so that would be, need to be discussed as well. So that was the master plan as it was um created. We don't have to do it that way.
Right.
We can do it in a variety of different ways. Um, the way it was uh shared with us, there's phases that we could do. Um, but we're hesitant to, you know, planting trees or putting in a a community garden, which could be moved. Or all kind of things that we don't wanna do if that's where the drainage is supposed to go. Um, so we're kind of spinning on sugar and gel. And this is where I stopped.
Right.
See how you all are feeling about that or or what questions come to mind.
So. If I could, um, the part that she talked about being village property um was mentioned to the SE group. And unfortunately, they didn't really take that to like, because they don't understand town village.
Right.
Kind of odd.
Yeah.
And I don't think we wanna spend the money to get a survey.
No.
Um, I think we just have to. exclude that.
Well, so that's what I'm wondering, if like, yeah, like, if we get, and I'm totally just talking out. Um, making out loud, so. I like the phases idea, but like I was, but like you were saying, there has to be some kind of big picture in order to figure out what's gonna impact what.
Do you have a.
I mean, you gotta have some sort of plan.
You gotta have a big plan.
To get these storm drains in place and then.
I would always put planting of trees as the last phase.
Right, you don't wanna have to move a tree.
Yeah.
It's just gonna die.
It's just gonna die. Um. I will. Um, like, this.
So where is the village property?
It's a small corner, right? Isn't it in red, Billy Joe, up on that corner?
Oh, that little piece of pizza like?
It's one or eight acres. It's actually almost two acres.
Oh, so I lied. I didn't lie.
That's it.
Oh, yeah.
Is it the little piece of pizza?
Is it the pizza?
Kind of, it's it starts at water tower and it's kind of flat in the front and then.
Oh, that whole piece?
Yeah, it goes up through the pond, it looks like, right?
Yeah, there's a wetland.
Starts here and it goes like, it's this, like, see this line right here? It's this, okay, this is one.
Pull that square off, it's face deep.
So. I, I'm again saying, it could be like. The community could, I, there could be torches at my house when I come, but I. My feeling is, I, like, this part just speaks such trouble to me.
What's in it, since you?
So it's the new ball field.
Okay.
All that wetland.
Yeah.
And the village property, like, that piece, like, that part seems like that's gonna be be a obstacle. In creating the rest. That's just my sense, I could be totally wrong.
I think it's okay to flex and to shift.
Right.
I don't think if if we can say that this isn't this part.
It's kind of off the table.
Which is like a luxury.
Yeah.
It it's not feasible right now.
Yeah.
I think we're okay. It it's designed in phases because, you know, there there might be things that are more feasible than than that, and we're okay with that.
Right.
Um. That's okay.
And when I'm thinking stormwater and I'm thinking permitting, I'm thinking like, this is gonna have way more like, impact on. The lot, the bottom.
So that that ball field isn't.
Doesn't look like it.
The the it's, the ball field is safe, it's what is near.
No, the new, it's the new, the new ball field.
I haven't marked it since.
No, I know, yeah, I get that, but this is.
Yours, it's.
I get that. This is the part that it's gonna have to be blasted.
It's ledge.
It's cool, total ledge. So that's why I'm thinking like this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sounds.
The answer, that's entirely true.
But this, it it's actually to get another ball field so we can get away from the dairy center, would be totally worth the expense of a blast.
You think so?
Absolutely.
And what?
There's not as expensive as expensive as you would think.
Really?
It's expensive, but it's not astronomical.
Just leave some dynamite out.
Okay.
And there's people who make.
Cause that just seems, so here's, this is good, we're talking this out, because that felt like between this and that, and that just seemed overwhelming to me.
I think the, I think the more we can have here and instead of.
No, absolutely, Amy, yes.
The better, so in the long run, instead of, it's two thousand fifty dollars every year to rent. Plus, plus quartet.
Right, okay, so then what about taking that village property out of the plan?
I think it has to be because.
Cause it's not ours.
I don't think they'll give it to us? No.
I think it's worth a conversation to say, hey, what are you, what are your plans for us? Do you, do you have something on there? Maybe there's something, some utility type of thing that we don't know anything about.
Right.
We can certainly have that conversation.
Yeah, we have a.
Yeah, I would ask them, I mean.
Because maybe if there's nothing.
Because if they're willing to just maybe donate it or if it's nothing anyways, you know, I mean, if it's nothing, they're doing it.
But it might be also the the way to get to to one of their um, one of those things, the the buildings that they keep. I think there is one.
Oh, is it?
Back here, someplace. If you see Gary Denton, I guess it's worth a.
Yeah.
Conversation.
So we're totally open to doing certain elements, leaving some others. There are some things in the plan that I think add a lot of um opportunity for the community. A playground, um more accessible, like, you know, if if I'm not stable on my feet, walking down to watch my kiddo play, it's not simple.
Yeah.
Or safe for everybody with everybody's, moving the parking away, separating the space between this facility and that. Those are really important priorities for making it safe for everybody and and to um offering more opportunity. And I think most of that happens within um the property that is currently here and we're flexible, but not sure how to move it forward. So I can certainly talk to the trustees.
Well, we have a joint meeting next month with them, so I think that's a be a time for this live work to.
Is a month, okay.
To question.
Yeah.
And so, again, let's talk this out. My thinking is then, if if that is part of the plan. I think stormwater and drainage would be the next logical step, because if you're, if you. You know, if it's all gonna dump into here, I don't know.
And is that in function of an engineer?
I think you'd definitely be where you'd start here redoing everything.
You're redoing everything.
You're adding, you're adding to the system, too. You're adding to, and I don't know how how much of an impact that would be, but you're actually adding to the stormwater system.
It would be an engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, so then how would we, knowing that we're flexible, um but wanting to move forward, how does the town? Apply for an engineer?
So you would want a grant for that potentially, so northwest planning commission.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, Greta would be probably your point person, cause she's all about that, that that aspect.
And I think if they're doing that much, they might wanna consider um bathrooms.
Oh, definitely, like a bath bathroom.
They're in the plan.
Some bathrooms are in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bathrooms are nice.
Yes.
The changing rooms are, it would be great to have bathrooms and changing rooms.
Exactly. Um, yeah, I feel like that, cause then you're gonna, you're gonna find out what's usable and what's not usable.
Who put all this together? Was it?
SE group.
SE group.
We had a grant.
Vital Village people.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a um a planning grant that NRPC helped us write, um and there was some investment from the town, I can't remember. Well, we might have used rise from our money to do that, to help um pay for the match for that.
They didn't have any engineer or anything when they were doing this, just.
They had, they had general guidance.
Yeah.
Um, and I did reach out to them and ask them, you know. Do we need these permits? What what's going on? And they gave me an answer, which I think. Did I include, did they include you in it? Anyway, they they gave an answer. I was like, maybe if we do this and definitely if we do this and. Um, and we'd be happy to bid on a, you know, so I think they could help us go further. Um, there's other people, obviously, who put it out to bid and whoever, but it's it's something that they um could do as well.
And so the phase, the wetlands.
If you didn't mind, this is a dream plan.
Right. Because after doing the research from our last meeting about the class two wetlands, like, you're not gonna be putting much in there. So that's why I was looking, but it looks like it's like on the peripheral, yeah.
And it was more of a bulldog kind of exploration.
Yeah.
Which provided some opportunity and actually Tom Hand, who helped us from SE group, did say that, you know, the state might give you some pushback, although it provides some benefit as far as knowledge and education and exploration without much harm, so he thought.
Yeah.
Exactly that, that it might be challenging, but maybe works.
Right.
And sometimes there, if you work with them and maybe you give a little and whoever promote to what it's like in certain areas, they might work with you too.
Like I think about the the walkover and the karma swamps. Okay. Hey, Jess.
Are you still there, Yvonne?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here. I'm just listening.
Yeah, I think that might be the next step.
So conversation with the trustees next month.
Yep, about that piece of property.
Yeah, or their interest, you know, this is a, this is a greater community resource as well, so the benefit is not just Kennesaw. An H, but Kennesaw Falls and the surrounding communities are ready to use the fields as well.
And if anything on something like that, you may just wanna uh. Give them a heads up or be on their agenda in the next meeting or two, so that if this topic happens to come up with us jointly.
It's not a surprise.
That they say, well, we don't know nothing about it, if. Unfortunately, yeah, it's.
I understand.
Wh- what do you, what do you, like, Amy and Yvonne, what do you guys think would be the biggest, best bang for the buck to get started going?
You know, we've talked, um, we've talked about movable um. Elements right now, so the goggle pit, we can take it down and put it somewhere else. That's why we started with that. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit about, um, not necessarily community gardening, um, but. Ed- edible landscaping or food and landscaping at the same time, um, something that makes the space more inviting. Something that maybe we do in containers, something that we've talked to, we're gonna have a conversation with the students at Cold Hollow about something, way that they can be involved in that. And planned for it to be movable. Um, so again, trying to draw more interest in the space. Um, while understanding that we may, it it's gonna get redesigned, although many of the elements aren't getting redesigned, they're getting, um, you know, so if you look at the soccer fields. Uh, one of the things people really talked about wanting is those trees that that were between the road and the soccer fields. I mean, it made everybody feel safer. And a more welcoming space, um, and I'm not sure how that would impact drainage or what. I have no, I don't know this stuff. So the walking path that's there could be refreshed. I mean, that's, um, you know, we put that in ten years ago. And so, you know, there there might be. Things that we can do to refresh the space without building much, um, while we're doing engineering, but we don't wanna lose interest in the space and we certainly want people to. Um, look to it as something that's coming and that's really coming, not stuck on the shelf.
That, I feel like that's low hanging fruit is that walking path, just refreshing it and kind of getting people jazzed about work and, you know, you could even do like um.
Spruce stuff.
Yes.
Make it usable and.
And I think if you do um a few playground items, because.
Yeah.
You look at Facebook, there there's people that travel to different schools and for a while, the schools didn't allow anybody onto the stuff because of COVID. So I think that's a really sought after thing, is playgrounds, that'll bring them in for sure.
But where would we put it?
Um, if I could add something, um. I don't know if this has been mentioned yet, but when you look at the breakdown of each phase or, you know, the different projects, um, and I think we we covered this. So maybe we had a meeting about the park, um, we realized that there are things that, you know. Volunteers could do, you know, there are things that people here in our community can either donate or do, um, to. To help us uh refresh the park, like you mentioned, like the walking path came to mind. That's that's something that. That I I feel that we might be able to get some volunteers to help with that and not necessarily invest, you know, a whole lot of money in that.
And every time we bring the students involved or volunteers involved, people feel better about the space, so there's that kind of um abstract.
And you're educating them too on what's going on.
Yeah, it's such a great space. We want people to want to be here. Yeah, it's such a great space. We want people to want to be here and to feel invested in their community, especially young people. It has benefits.
Yeah.
Okay.
Super. Anything else?
Do you need more direction than that from us to start looking for grants and everything?
I hear that's on my list to connect with the trustees prior to a meeting with you all next month. And to make sure that they're engaged and aware and excited as well. To talk with Greta and our PC to talk about potential grants for an engineering scoping study. Um, and then to look at some of the low hanging fruits, such as that edible garden um or planters. Look at perhaps playground equipment, um, which would probably be grant funded as well. I think we've raised some funds, but probably not very much. And um to continue to capitalize on volunteer improvement, I mean involvement.
Does Inisburg do a class gift?
We used to.
Yeah, like so for instance, all the playground equipment up at the Collins Pearly, um, I think the class gift, they donated like six thousand dollars.
I know. Rise did too.
Yeah.
But isn't um isn't the elementary schools doing something to raise money for their playground as well?
It could be. Like I'm thinking like your graduating class gives a class gift and whatever you do, you get to put your plaque on like um, class of da 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 da. Um, and so that might be um something neat that they leave behind is some playground equipment. I just was thinking of different things, but um and I wouldn't be surprised if there's some like funky COVID grant out there about creating outdoor spaces.
Actually, there is.
Yeah.
I just saw it come Friday. It's something to do with rec and community. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, so that's why I'm wondering if, I think regional probably would have that.
They know everything.
They know everything. Exactly. That's my go to. That's my go to.
Might be a good time to jump on a lot of this because there's seems to be money.
Probably.
Outdoor spaces and community health.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure how that fits with, I know ARPA funding and whatever else it's called is coming. I don't know how it fits. I know that I talked with Sean. Um, and that's being defined still.
It's pretty loose.
So I I would certainly encourage you all to keep that in mind as a potential because it does create more outdoor gathering spaces for people, educational opportunities, recreation, healthy behaviors, those are all important in keeping us healthy as a community, in my opinion.
Now, the ARPA funds were delineated between the village and the town.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna go to the village and I'm going to talk to the village. Okay.
Great.
Okay. Feel free to reach out to Yvonne and certainly supporting her. It was just easier for me to be here in person than it was for her.
Sure.
Okay.
Great.
Can I just mention one more thing? Um, I just wanted to quickly just, um, I know it was it was covered, but um I wanted to just highlight that we are looking into doing the um community, maybe like some sort of, but like Amy mentioned, um edible garden or like maybe uh some garden beds or something like that. Um, so we are looking into that and and hoping that we could do something. Maybe start uh either planting or doing some something this fall. I know it seems rather quick, but we're we're looking into it. And um with the idea that we could find a group to help manage it and help maintain it, because I know that's kind of a thing as well, like keeping up with everything that's in the rec fields right now, um, and helping maintain it. So so that's what we're working on um right now. And and once we know more, we'll of course fill you guys in to make sure you're okay with that too, but yeah, we we have a meeting about that on on Wednesday, right Amy? With with a few groups.
But the thing is, you keep it in mind that uh over on Orchard Street, we've got a community garden too.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the same kind of community garden.
Okay.
Um, it it, so we've talked about flowers or um edible landscape, so shrubbery, like bush, uh blueberries or things that people can kind of walk by, help themselves. Just, yes.
Okay.
Not to compete.
Personal space, but actually community space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it's the concept that we're going with right now. Again, just to draw more people, variety of different people to the space. So if you know of any people who love gardening, who want to get their hands dirty with a project like this, send them to Yvonne.
I wonder about the vocational center, do they still have the?
Horticulture? I don't think they do.
They don't have them.
Greenhouse and all that stuff?
Yeah.
I don't know.
So we're connecting with Sarah Sevens at Cold Hollow.
Oh, you are?
Yes, yeah, on Wednesday.
Good.
Be a good community.
Yeah.
Or out time for some students if they needed to.
Yes. A great creative outlet. Thank you all.
Super.
Nice.
Good job.
Are you all set up?
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Yvonne. Thanks.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Bye. Bye. Bye, Amy.
Thank you.
Bye. Drive safe.
Yep.
Yep.
Come on in, introduce yourself and let us know what position you got.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What can you bring to the table?
It better be cupcakes.
I should, yeah. I'm not gonna upstage with Joe, no, no.
I do bring cupcakes.
Sorry for my boys too, by the way. I went to the Pat's game last night, the Patriots game last night. We froze to death. We had to, we had to, we had to holler in order to keep warm last night, so. It was a good game.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Nineteen to seventeen.
Nineteen to seventeen.
Who won?
Uh, campivated. It went down to the wire to a kick. And it just went, and it hit the pole and it just went the wrong way. But it was, it was, it was good to see. It was good to see Brady back there. It was good. It was funny because he came out originally, everybody cheered for him. And then when he came out to actually go on the field to play, they booed him.
You like you to a point.
We're like, so what is there, what's everyone gonna do here? How's this gonna go? And it was like, they they did it both ways.
We respect you, just not that much.
Yeah. You're fine off the field when you're throwing the darn ball now.
Okay, so this is Jesse Woods. He's our zoning administrator and uh what do you got planned?
So uh talking about um bylaw updates, last time we had all talked, uh we had kind of gone over the fee schedule and everything. We knew the village was gonna be up here in twenty twenty two. Um, of course, like you guys were just talking recently, you know, there's money out there, the MPG is up right now, that's out and available. There was also another grant, the Bylaw Modernization Grant, working with Greta at Northwest. We didn't know what the language when that came out, the the modernization side, what that was gonna mean, if we could go down that road or we could go down the MPG. In talking with the planning commission and talking with Greta, um, she's like, well, you know, obviously we'll we update the village, but we could at the same time update the towns. And then we kind of threw out, what if we do, you know, put that all into one book, obviously, you know, one set of bylaws. We still have a separate village section with, you know, the downtown business district, all that stuff, but basically put everything in one cover, so we can do. So we met a couple of weeks ago, we met the planning commission, Greta came, the language came out. For the scope of work of what we're looking at, so basically it's to consolidate those two, um, you know, those two books. Continue what I had started with the forms, the fees, look at those fees, update those fees, consolidate those fees. You know, basically make everything streamlined into one thing. The MPG is really what that needs to go. Like the the bylaw and modernization thing is more of your bylaws, if you want to update them, you want to freshen them up, you want to change some things, because what it does, it kind of makes it a little easier to build housing in certain areas, which we can still update our bylaws based on that, but it's this, it's kind of, it's kind of wild, you know. We're talking about the scope, this scope of work, which it is a large project, but she's like, it's probably twenty thousand by the time you, you know, do all this from the ground up. So there's a twenty two hundred dollar match with that, eleven hundred for the village and for the town. Basically, not, it it, I think it would still come under the general fund because I think it would pull from, you know, obviously, you know, half and half. Um, but there is that match.
Yeah, because all of that is under the town.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So there was a little bit of confusion with some of the um, with some of the uh the planning commission, how that goes and we kind of, you know, because they weren't sure, well, the village is this, and they said, no, from the general fund, it pulls it, it's even, it's, you know, so.
And we took control off over.
Right.
All, right.
Right. So one of the little funky parts in this whole thing is being that we have a combined population of over twenty five hundred residents. We have to have a three bid procurement on this job is what we have to have.
Okay.
So it kind of made it for a funky situation. Um, I was supposed to meet with you guys last time. We really didn't even still have all the details. So Northwest and Greta, they will apply for the grant for us.
Okay.
Um, but it kind of put them in a funky spot, like we can't really apply for the grant and then bid on the project. And then she was honest, she was like, I don't know if we really want to bid on this because this is a pretty large scale project. She goes, we're not really sure if we want to really tackle that thing. So she has since come back and said, she has confirmed, we will do the application. Um, we will not, you know, we will not bid, we will not, you'll have to put it out to, you know, a three bid.
Who else would do it?
We're not, I'm waiting to hear back from her. I asked, basically, somebody had asked the question, um, you know, have you ever had a situation like this where, you know, a plan has gone, you know, basically unpicked up? And she said, no, usually you put it out. Um, she said she could help steer in the direction. I was gonna go to League of Cities and Towns to see maybe what they have and talk about who, you know, other planners are out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like who would do it?
Who else would do it? And she she said she was very confident that someone else would pick that up.
When she says someone else, does she mean other planning?
Other planning.
Regional planning.
Other, other.
Oh, I was like, what is it, like, a company that does?
Right, well, right, and she, the way she made it sound too, and and I'm waiting to hear back because I have some other questions with her too, um. She's supposed to tell me, it sounds like there's some also consultants out there that will do it as well.
Okay.
You can do it. So I was kind of like, it might be kind of a nice, um, you know, Northwest has always been great with everything, um, you know, but just, you know, new, you know, new eyes on things.
You know what, sorry. You know what would cut, it's, it's not gonna be popular, but you know what would cut down on a lot of that is, and we did this, remember? We literally went as the planning commission, like we actually read it.
Well, and and that was discussed, and that was discussed literally where everyone would take sections.
What we did.
And go through them. So I've been keeping, I mean, this is one of my folders, every time I go and read the bylaws or an issue comes up or something, I take a sticky note and I write this and then I'm like, well, what is this? I have constant notes, so whenever I'm reading, I've been keeping a running tally ever since I've started this of like, this should be changed or this needs to be clarified or this. Why is this like this in the village, but it's in the town, it's different, but it really should be the same? And it's no fault to anyone, but it's literally those two documents are two hundred and fifty pages long.
Right.
And a lot of it is, again, and it's no fault, it's just you're copying and pasting from a lot of different ones because it's like, this one fits here.
Yeah, I actually found a section that says north here on ours.
Yeah, south here.
Yes, out here. Because you think about what you're paying for, I mean, how many meetings that they come and say, what do you want to work on? And then they go through it, but it's really the planning commission, like, okay, this section, do we want to keep it? Do we want to change it? How about this section? Do we want to keep it? Do we want to change it? And if you do so much of that live work, I wonder if.
Right, and that's in the, in the, in the, the planning commission, literally, they had all kind of agreed, like, like you just said, we literally piece it apart and.
Yeah.
You know, there's some things, um, I can't remember if it's the village or the town one, where it says, you know, boundary line, you know, adjustment, refer to this table. And you go to that table and there's nothing there for boundary line adjustment. It just listed out as minor and major subdivision. And again, and I I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not anything, but it's just one of those things where you're doing it, you know, Northwest is doing it for here and they're doing it for here, they're doing it for this one and this one and this one, and it makes it really difficult. When we did it.
And what we did is we just took every, we said we're gonna do this section at this meeting. And I think we did divvy up, like you read three pages, I'll read these three pages, you read those four pages, and they come together. Um, and it took us maybe, I don't know, it felt like it didn't take that long, but.
No, I think, no, it didn't. We did go through it all.
We did go through it.
And how much you judge to make it fit our own stuff.
Yeah, to make it fit our own stuff. And it was amazing too, because afterwards we're like, we wanted that in there and it didn't make it in there. And I think if we had had the um, uh, what's the, the stamina to follow through, because when we got to that point, we were like, okay, now go do it. If it did stamina to actually go back through it again, I think we probably would have caught some stuff that didn't happen. But I think, like again, it's probably, that's, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, right.
But it was.
Everybody was really, the planning commission was super excited about it. They were very, we came out of the meeting, actually, we all talked about it because we were like, you know, merging these two documents, all this stuff, really doing it, you know, really changing kind of the din, not changing the dynamic, but really, you know, bringing it all, kind of finishing what we had all started when this job was merged, you know, and finishing it all. So everyone was really excited. So it wasn't, there wasn't a sentiment of like, oh, okay, we gotta do this, here, here we go.
Does that mean a long haul?
Yeah, so that that was, that was good. Um, the other thing, and I'm waiting, um, and Billy Joe and I talked about too, is I'm waiting to hear back from Greta. So there's an eighteen month window to get the work done for the MPG. But the village bylaws will run out at the end of twenty two. So how does that work for us applying, you know, if we don't have those bylaws in place? So say it does take longer than a year, you know, heaven forbid with everything going on, you know, for some reason it takes us longer than, you know, I don't foresee it that way, but what happens with that? So I've got that question out there. Like what is, what entails after, you know, twenty twenty three and, you know, we're working on it, we're we're building it, we're still whatever, you know? What happens there? So we've got that.
I don't think it's gonna take that long.
I don't, I don't think so either. And that's when she'd thrown out the, because she kind of threw out the eight, she said, well, you got eighteen months to work on it. And it's like.
So my thought process is make sure to do the village first. Because worst, worst case scenario, you adopt it by itself.
Right.
And then re-adopt it when you do the town.
That way.
Right.
Because I was gonna say, if you go through and you adopt it, then you can always make.
Check, right.
Right, you know, change it, right.
Re-adopt it.
Right, right. Yeah, so that that was one thing. Uh, the other thing that we had talked about too, um, and again, this is gonna be depending on technologies, depending on who does the actual document itself. People are now doing, towns are now doing websites that allow for transparency, so you can kind of give a rolling update of what's going on. So, you know, to show, kind of showcase the change, because some, the question, the question was brought up about public, you know, bringing the public in as far as, um, you know, interaction changes, you know, meetings, what do we do, you know, do you make it as a, you know, make it as a website? You know, eventually you're gonna have to have a public meeting weighing on it. Um, but the website, again, there's a little bit of a learning curve there, but.
Hmm, that's interesting, because at first, my first reaction was like, ooh, too many cooks in the kitchen sometimes gets ugly. Um, but in the same sense is it might give them something to talk about at those public hearings because you don't get anybody.
Yeah, right. Well, and then you don't get, my first thought, I I kind of thought with you, I'm like, okay, so everybody's gonna be, you know, why are you doing this? What are you doing this? But it might be better than you don't get blindsided later on at, you know, if if people see, seeing the process plan out and you're doing those things and then you can kind of address them, well, why did you guys do this? Why aren't you doing, you know, then you can kind of, if if you can, if you can head it off as it's going as well, kind of my thought was.
And we always complain about how people don't participate. Why, I guess, would we want to limit their participation? But my knee jerk was, but maybe it's.
Yeah. Well, and I always say that when people have always, in the short time I've done this already, where people are like, well, why is this and this? And like, well, the village bylaws are up here shortly.
And to be super clear, it's a draft, because you know, there's gonna, some people who are just gonna think it's gospel.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just, it's a thought, it was, you know, again, and depending on where the bid comes in, who the company is, it might not even be, you know, might not even be an option, might not even be possible. Um, you know, the biggest thing that we had kind of, the conditional use, the site plan review, a lot of that stuff, modernizing a lot of that stuff. You know, and just making the entire thing more user friendly. It's good, but it, there are some situations, again, in the short time, I, you know, you tell somebody, well, go to section, you know, three, three for the conditional route, and they go through it and they're like, wait, what? How am I supposed to, you know, you're trying to. Wait, what? How am I supposed to, you know, you're trying to follow, and just, just making that, like I said, uh, just more streamlined. And bringing Angie into, you know, with Angie, you know, what were your concerns?
Yeah.
Over those seven years, you know, what hit list would you have, you know, that you clean up?
I think she was, she made one. I believe she made.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, I remember her keeping pretty good documents about the things that she would run up against.
Yeah, um and then the last thing, um, we talked about too, and is the website integration of documents. So submitting.
Oh, yeah.
Would be nice, um, we've got them all up on the website now. We've got the, the best versions of the documents on the website now that you can print. Stuff we've always had, but we have, you know, I kind of went through and made sure that the fees were right on them and, you know, kind of, but they're still not. The village ones are, the village ones are rough. I mean, they've been copied and recopyed and recopied so many times, it's almost, yeah. So, you know, again, and that would be nice if you could have that document, those, all those documents, submit them, you know, submit them online. So the only thing, so yeah, you, um, as the select board would be the applicant, of course, for the, you know, for the, the grant is how it would work. Um, the only thing Greta said that I need from the village, which I'm going next week, next Tuesday, um, just a letter of support from them. So, from the, from the trustees.
Okay.
But you don't need a letter of support from these guys?
Well, they're gonna be, they're gonna be. Since they're, they're gonna be the applicant, you're basically, so Northwest is gonna do everything, get everything up, and then. I gotta talk with Greta and I was gonna talk with you about somehow, last time you had submitted one, you had done it. But Greta thought maybe she was still on.
She is still on.
Yeah.
And I'm still on.
Okay.
BJ is the, still the financial person who handles like the invoices and everything that comes in. Um, I, I'm the one that hits the submit button. I think it, I think Greta's still an administrator.
She thought so, she thought so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Um, along with a bunch of other people that don't even work here regional.
Right, right.
They don't even work here, um, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, since I, I knew at this and that's, I've asked, I'm actually, I'm waiting, I've emailed her, just kind of what, you know, once we get, um, you know. Basically, your blessing and then the village's blessing, what, you know, the next step is and how we go, cause the applications do November first.
I was just gonna ask what to do.
Okay, but you kind of threw a wrench in the whole system, that bylaw modernization thing, because we've known obviously about the MPG for so long, but we didn't know what the language was. For the by, the modernization thing, so it was like, okay, what, you know, so. But yeah, so like I said, I'll know Tuesday in regards to. Village, and I know the village won't, last time I went to talk about the fee schedule and stuff, they were kind of like, okay.
There's gonna be that one time jazzy, but you won't see it coming. What else? Was there something about listers now?
Yeah, but for that, um.
Yeah.
How is everything else going with the zoning?
Very good, very good, thank you, yeah, very good, um, we, uh, I think we're at roughly. Forty permits we've done so far for the year, I think is what we've got, um. Not a lot of hearings right now, stuff now with materials coming back down, more permits are coming, coming in. Uh, some hearings coming up, we got some stuff, I mean, we've got, uh, you know, working with some other things with the, uh. You know, purely law coming up and that coming down and, you know, it's been, it's been very good, it's been. Enjoy it.
Time, time wise, how is it?
Fine.
Okay, yeah.
Fine.
Is there anything you need from us?
No, I mean, right now, I mean, this, this is gonna be a huge part of going through this and really consolidating, not that it was hard or anything before. But, um, just keeping it, just keeping that together for, you know, for, for the sake of this one, this one. And one of those things, you know, you'll, you'll be looking on, you know, your computer and you're going down through and you're looking through the bylaws and you're like, oh, I'm in the town, not the village.
Yeah, no, exactly.
Some of those little things and just that kind of stuff, but no, no, I mean, this is a great pace, this is. It's doable, it's manageable. Again, I don't know, I don't know if this is a normal year, a low year, or, you know, I'm guessing it's probably on the lower side. Because of the material, you know, I'm guessing, you know, there's just not a lot of construction.
Oh, because the materials, I was gonna say normally either.
Right, everything is so expensive, you know, it was so expensive, it's a lot of it's coming down now, you know, you could literally see in permits. Where, you know, materials were coming down, you know, cause there was a while there, there was a few weeks where there was just no permits, yeah.
That's so funny.
Yeah, so, but I think, yeah, we're, I just had, I think we're, the other day, the, the town one is twenty one, twenty one right now. And I think it's seventeen or eighteen on the village for the year, so we're, yeah. Yeah, yeah, nothing, as far as troubles or anything like that, everything's been, you know, the biggest, the, 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 the nice thing is having those hours. That's hours there, so people can.
Yeah.
There and all those kind of things, so.
Alright.
Good, great.
Super.
What's next?
Alright, so, you're off, off the hot seat and, uh, is Joey coming in?
It's still him.
Oh, still him, okay.
So.
We're gonna do the list, I think?
You guys had said bring him in to see if he wants to.
Yeah, we're doing that now.
So, I think so.
Oh, cause you have, we have it.
I'll move to go into executive session for.
Oh, and on here, it's after Joey.
That's a different one.
That's, that's why I asked about the two. I answered there was two.
I thought I had written in two different places.
No, I thought I asked about two, I got you, okay.
I'll move to go into executive session for personnel issues.
So it's been moved and seconded, then we go into executive se- session for personnel issues, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it. Next on the agenda.
Got you.
We have our town administrator, Joey Clark. Oh, no. So road forming?
Yeah.
Okay. What you got?
Uh, I got, uh, some feedback on loaders, you know, last meeting, I wanted to look into an outright sale versus a trade. And, and I told the, called the case dealer and told him that we decided to go with John Deere. And he wasn't surprised, but, and, uh, so I asked John Deere about outright sale, and they said to take thirty five hundred dollars off the. Well, I guess you'd call it the list price here.
Oh.
The one sixty two, five twenty four, take thirty five hundred dollars off of that if we did an outright sale.
Thirty five hundred or a thousand?
Thirty five hundred.
If we sold the.
If we sell it outright, they'll take.
Oh, okay. Yeah, if we sell their loader, so they're gonna give us thirty two thousand for our loader. But if we sell it outright, you can, I don't know. Well, we can get more than that, opposed to thirty five hundred. Thirty five hundred, basically, he said, yeah, cause I won't have to truck it, I won't have to prep it, and try to sell it, and he was even gonna try to. He said, I got some people that are looking for used loaders, so he's gonna send them our way, but I haven't got any calls yet.
Okay. Alright.
So I don't know.
So is your asking price gonna be what he was offering in the trade, or do you go more?
I wouldn't say we go a little more, yeah, because ordinarily, they're gonna make money too, you know, they're setting the price, so they're gonna probably sell it for fifty.
Forty five, fifty.
Well, do you want that number tonight, so you have a?
Well, I don't know how, if we're gonna do it, or how we're gonna do it, if we did do it, uh, what we done with the trucks, they put them out to bid, but. And then you have the right to refuse a little of any.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't know if that's what we wanna do, or, like I said, I haven't got any calls from these guys, he's trying to send their way, so I don't know if they're. Sitting back waiting, or if they're.
Can we do a minimum bid? If we put it out, can we do a minimum? Yeah, I mean, we want the minimum of at least whatever they're gonna give us.
Refuse any and all bids.
Oh, refusing.
And the thing is, you would, do you really wanna put it out to bid, or you just, we say in a month's time? If we don't get any feedback, then we know we gotta go local.
Well, can't really sell it right now anyway, cause I think it's not gonna be for.
Right.
Right, yeah, it'd be, uh, what'd I say, six to sixty to ninety days, I guess, to get on if you'd order it. But I think we all want it understood to, if, if we're to sell it or put it out to bid to sell, that we, we need to keep it until.
Right.
No one gets here, and then it can go, even if they agree on the price today, or I could be, so, yeah, I don't know. That's what they, that was the deal, take thirty five hundred off the one sixty two. Five twenty four, say one fifty nine, basically. And then anything over, so you're gonna save thirty five hundred, anything over the thirty two you could get. Probably shouldn't be saying that number on the camera.
Eighty thousand.
Okay.
How long before you have to let?
I think this price is good to the end of October, I think that what Larry said the last.
I know one.
Yeah, expiration date, October thirty first, and I called him the other day, and I've got the thinking and wondering there, you know. Say we decide to do this, we're not, all of a sudden we order it, gonna. Say, oh geez, you know, yeah, we just ordered it, but there's a price increase we didn't know about, and he said, no, but this price is good to the end of the month. And this is the price, and we said, why don't you order it? It's locked in, so even if there's a price increase later on. Two months down the road, or a month before you get it, or whatever, you, this is what you're gonna pay.
Is it possible to order it now, not knowing the trade? If it's not coming for sixty to ninety days anyways?
Yeah, I mean, you could order it, then you can do whatever.
The money part at the end will be one of the sale.
Right.
Soon. If you wanna put ours up for sale that quickly, if somebody, you know, never know, you can sell it next week, or it could be three months. You know, if you wanna do it closer to the time that we're gonna be giving it.
Right, yeah, you wouldn't have to, right, you wouldn't have to.
You wouldn't have to say to the guy, well, we don't know, we've got ninety days, and so somebody might be looking for a loader tomorrow, or they might be looking for one thirty days from.
Right. Have to be in, understood it.
Right, if you did do it that way, like right off, it's just in the bid, in the, in the ad, whatever, you know, gonna take bids, but.
Wouldn't be able to take possession until the first of the year, or first of February, or.
So that way the person would know when they put their bid in, that they were gonna get this thing tomorrow.
So easy way.
So we gave, so we gave you approval on that, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, when we get the money, it's in the equipment fund.
Yeah, did we vote on it last time to give you approval to go with that, or do we need to?
No, I don't think you did, just that you wanted me to check on an outright sale.
Yeah.
And then, well, I talked, like I said, I talked to the case dealer salesman, and he said, yeah, he said, well, if you're to, you know, if we're asking him that. He said, what the price is, is the price, he said, I don't, I don't have it jacked up. And these guys didn't either, they, you know, they start selling list price, like two hundred thousand, then you get municipal discount, they did an info with that. Thirty five hundred you're saving is the, you don't have to deal with it, you don't have to go get it, send a truck up to get it. Bring it down, prep it, then truck it to whoever else probably do it, I don't know, so that's supposed to be it, right?
So we need to motion?
If you're gonna give him permission.
Or give him permission?
I move to give Joey permission to proceed with the, uh, purchases of a loader from John Deere.
Alright, so it's been moved and seconded, that, uh, you give Joey permission to proceed with the, uh, transaction of our new piece of equipment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, it's in your hands. Big spender.
Yeah.
I never spent money so easy. I love it.
I think it's a good choice.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely, you gotta keep the equipment fresh. You gotta keep it fresh.
Circulation.
Anything else?
So are we putting the old one out for bids and see what happens?
Yeah, I guess you just have to decide.
Can, maybe, can you get an exact date on that? I mean, I realize you probably can't get a day, especially in the middle of the winter. But if you could get something within a week of knowing, then.
Probably when he puts it in, out to order, like if he call or sends the order in, and then they're popular. I think in a few days, usually like with the trucks, after a week or so, they'll send them a build date, the date that they're actually gonna build the thing.
Right.
And then he knows how long it's gonna take to get it in their hands, you know, it might be another two weeks after it gets built before it gets up to their place.
Cause if we're gonna ask somebody to wait, they should at least have some sort of an idea.
Well, maybe we could, we could put that out in, in December.
Yeah, that's.
Because, because the thing is, is that, I mean.
I agree, wanna know before, we aren't gonna get any bids or anything serious, we wanna trade it.
Well, yeah, that might be the thing too.
I don't know, that's just my.
Yeah, well, I guess I was gonna say, it might depend on the time of year, construction guy might need it, but he's not gonna get it till the first of February anyway.
Right.
Right, you know, but if they're, but if they know it now, are willing to wait, get through this season and, and purchase it, you're right, yeah. It might be better out to run it right now.
I don't know, just.
Cause the toughest part is that if that piece of equipment doesn't come in on that date.
Yeah.
And it's delayed three weeks.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Could you put something in the bid that says like, um, purchase effective on like April first or something like that?
Can you cover the rest of that money until then?
Put a bid on this piece of equipment, purchase would be effective April first.
I don't know how it would affect somebody bidding on it, but if it was just worded that, you know, that's, you, you can't purchase, you can't have this piece of equipment. Until our new loader's in.
Right.
Leave it at that.
That could be, and like I say, it could be construction guys going, you know what, I got a loader I can limp through the rest of this year, if I can get hold of that loader in the spring. I'm interested, so you're probably right, probably run it now and get people time to think about it, and if it doesn't go, run it a month before, and it might, that might change something too. You know?
Meaning, because you, you run it for a month and you get, you don't get any serious bites or whatever, maybe you wanna trade it.
Right. But we don't have to make that decision, and probably until the day we decide when the new one's here, really, right?
Yeah, well, I don't know about, what salesman's saying about that.
Well, yeah, maybe you'd have to, if, if we don't trade it, then yeah, it's thirty five hundred off, but if, and when the thing comes, it's like, yeah, we haven't had any bites.
Yeah.
I guess we are gonna trade it, while you're probably gonna bump back up to thirty five hundred dollars, he's gonna.
Oh, definitely, yeah, definitely, the deal's gonna go back to the deal, yeah, we're gonna lose that thirty five hundred and push whatever else we can get. But it's still gonna be, the, the loader's gonna be gone, and a new one's gonna be here, and life goes on.
With, so with United or whoever, the John Deere's or Joey, this, we, were to trade it. And the transmission goes, and the old one, between now and when a new one comes in?
That's on us.
That's still on us.
It's gonna be on us, no matter what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, either way.
I believe it would be.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Get your shovels.
I know what you're saying, it's a good, I mean, in the ninety days or the sixty days, whatever.
Yeah, oh, definitely, I mean, something could go wrong with it.
Yeah, you, you, it shouldn't.
This price that they're giving us is as, as.
Right.
With the day he looked at.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna have more hours on it, they're not gonna knock some off of that, if it's a major.
I mean, if it was two thousand.
It's like, yeah, now it's not worth thirty two thousand. Ten thousand, or whatever, cause the transmission's gone.
Right.
Yeah, I would think that would be on us.
Alright, uh, just trying to think it out through it.
No, I, yeah, I know.
Okay.
But that's what we've done with the trucks the last, I don't know how many we've done, we put them out to bid, throw for sale sign on them out in the lawn.
Maybe as well. Farmers are using them, cause Shaw's are scot, that's probably, that would be his nicest loader.
He's got a, yeah, he's got a.
I still have to pick on it.
He's good.
Oh, yeah, oh, you gotta pick on his fleet, or else you just, you like it.
Right. Especially his plow.
Yeah, oh my god.
I don't know, where's the helper, the truck? Well, he's got good guys.
And then we got a driveway permit?
Yeah.
Situation?
Yeah, uh, crank pockets.
I found my notes on what the state's guidelines are, so it's kind of two parts of the subject here, I guess, but. So for a single home driveway, it's, it's just like our minimum standards, twelve foot minimum and twenty foot radius, for two home. For two home, they bump up to eighteen feet wide with a twenty foot radius, and once it becomes three homes, they go up to what they call commercial standards, and then it has to be twenty-four feet wide, with a thirty foot radius, so that's the state's guidelines. So I think maybe that's what we want in our zoning bylaws guidelines for driveways.
Yeah, did you send, you should.
You wanna write that down?
You get a picture of it?
Oh, yeah.
And then, another part of that too, was like on this application, there could be something added here, maybe some, what, what they're going for, this is like a res- residential driveway standards, that's what this is for. But maybe instead of calling it residential driveway application, maybe it should be, have a three boxes, you know, check one. You're just single home, two homes, or you're going to commercial.
One more streamline for.
Yeah.
Same application, just maybe, right?
But that might change some other things on it too. Jesse could change some things that would make this go more with this, and this go more with that.
Right, this is the same thing we've used right from the beginning, but it's now, yeah, they got to residential driveway, which is like a twelve foot minimum, but a lot of times now we're getting into these two family.
Can I take a picture of that to Joey, so that when I send it to him, I can explain what I'm talking about?
Now, did the Pockets driveway, this one on, um, Pearly Road or whatever, right?
Yeah, so that's the, so this is the kind of the zoning part of it, these are the states, and maybe that's what we wanna have. So going with Craig Pockets, existing driveway he's got, I stopped him there, top of the shoulder, top of the shoulders, about sixteen feet wide.
Well, she's almost there.
He's almost there, and I told him, I said, I think you could tuck out another foot each way there, not interfere with the wetlands, but I don't know how wetlands people in state people would see that, maybe that's not the way they would see it. So he was wondering if he could just upgrade that, if he was just gonna do a two instead of the three? If he could just upgrade it, I told him, if you cut the trees on both sides and put some gravel, reestablish what you got there for, with gravel. He was wondering if he'd kind of like be grandfathered, because these rules aren't really in effect, you know.
Yeah.
That is true.
You know, how you feel about it, but, then, then he'd go in the existing driveway, and the house is over here, he's gonna branch off to the right to go over to this other lock. If he ever decides to do the third one, and he gets up into the commercial, or he's gonna be twenty-four feet wide, well, then he's gonna run into an issue.
Then he's gonna run into an issue, but then he knows it going in.
He knows it going in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And he said, well, he can't come back on us, and, you know, like he said, he's grandfathered, and we say, okay, go ahead and do it, and he comes back and says something later, you know.
Well, he would be grandfathered, because the, like you said, these aren't in effect yet.
No, really, it's not, we've talked about it, but I don't, it's never been actually, it's not written down, so.
But then the thing is, is then you fall under the case of the wetlands, right?
Well, what probably said, that was seemed to be more, uh, on roads, and I didn't see anything, or it said anything about driveways, or just as roads, it's kind of.
I kinda took it as the same.
Driveway or road?
Yeah. Like a traveled, like that, yeah, that's kinda how I took it, but maybe it's different.
Well, if he does put three houses there, then it is a road.
That's a road, even if you put two houses on there.
It's a private road at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, with the state nine-one-one, how they look at a road is anything, three or more. If it has its own name, it's a road, if it doesn't, it's a driveway.
So that was my next question, so the signage comes in when, three, once there's three, then they gotta have a sign, a name. Then it becomes, I tell them I'd find that out, I said, I'm not sure if it's two or three.
But then would any of that be based on, um, footage?
No, it's based on the number of houses.
Well, no.
Living quarter places.
You know, you could have a five hundred foot driveway, or.
Doesn't matter.
I know, like the other places, so it's three, so once it's three, then it's considered a private road, it's gonna have a name.
Right, and so how I read it was, you shouldn't, like, expand any roadway in a class two, isn't that how, is that how you read it?
Yeah, there's some exemptions there.
There was some exemptions, but, and it was about kind of upgrading, so that's why I feel like you can upgrade, but you couldn't like expand or like redevelop.
Upgrade existing.
Upgrade, right. That's why I think he, if, if that goes, he knows, if it's gonna access three, he's gonna be in a pinch, cause wetlands probably won't let him meet those specs, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So then he's back to getting another driveway.
For the third law.
Right.
Which is what he's trying to do in the first place.
Where the second driveway is going, is there wetlands on either side of that? If he were to build a second driveway, is there wetlands on either side of that? Could he just close one driveway and build another one? So he's not in the.
Probably could, yeah.
So then if he needed to put a third house, then he just to.
It was a different driveway for those two places.
That would be an option now, I guess, too, if he wanted to. And after this is in, you do away with this one.
That's, I didn't even think of that.
Then if he, then he can make it eighteen feet wide, if he chooses for two, and then when down the road he does three, he can, if he stays fair enough away from the wetlands, he should build to do the twenty-four. So should I throw that to?
Say, look, this is common.
Do either or, if you think down the road you're gonna do three, you might wanna build your new one, and then you agree to give this one up, and take, take it out.
Yeah.
Either way, he's gonna agree to one driveway.
By taking it out, is he gonna be affecting the wetlands then?
Or he just stop using it, I guess, but.
That probably wouldn't happen, unless he took the cover down.
Take the cover down, plant some grass and.
Right.
Oh, yeah, if he took the cover.
Yeah, that's totally allowed.
And so your wetlands are now, not wetlands anyways, but they're now grass areas.
Yeah, it was more about development versus not development.
Or if he feels that he's definitely never gonna do three now, he's just gonna do two, or we gonna allow him to be grandfathered, just upgrade his existing.
I think so, either way, he's done the one driveway, right?
He would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Worry about the third one when it comes, by then the wetlands won't matter.
If we're, global warming continues, that's where we're at, everybody's wells are drying up.
If you ditch it, it'll be fine.
Alright.
Okay, anything else? Cool.
Get those things to you first thing in the morning.
Oh, the, yeah, the check.
Oh, um, what we also need to do first is, um, acknowledge Sean Kyle's letter of resignation and accept that. Um, we wish him well.
He's resigned.
He's resigning, um, he's taking a different position, so, yeah.
Will you motion?
Yep, so I'll move to accept the resignation letter.
Second it.
So it's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation letter of, uh, Sean Kyle, our economics, development, resource person.
Director.
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 All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do ayes have it, passed. So now our cleaning person, we've had an individual that expressed some interest, um, you wanna give him a try?
Well, first.
Yep.
Okay.
He, our last cleaning person that worked at my office, Pauline Baker, you know, we all love Pauline, um, she was on payroll, which, so then she fell under workman's comp, in case she ever got hurt, well, it's never happened, but.
Yeah.
Um, so he would, he's, he's asking if you do decide to give him a try, that's how he wants to be, he doesn't wanna be an independent contractor. He wants to be unemployed, which he already is, he's a fireman.
Oh.
But this would be on separate, he works for the town of Swanton.
Okay.
He's our age, and he's done well, so he's retiring in December, sort of. Um, and this is what he wants to do on the side, but he'll, he would start now, and then, like on weekends or at night.
And Pauline Baker's not doing it anymore?
She doesn't, no, we do our own, so it wouldn't be for my office, it would be for here, and when the time comes, the armory.
Yeah.
Uh, they haven't had anybody here for a while, and.
We were talking about it anyways.
Yeah, I would say for sure.
So.
He's looking to get seventeen an hour.
And how many hours?
Not really. I don't think, really know right now, like, I think right now it'd be like, see what you can do with X number of hours here, per week.
Yeah.
Because, the living quarters.
I feel, I, I know, I, I wonder if we should.
I wonder, I think maybe one, like, once a month, kind of do that, but then on the weekly, it'd be like bathrooms here, in the hallway. And, you know, both meeting rooms and stuff, um, but maybe in the living quarters.
Like, what were you thinking, like?
I think they should be.
Ten hours a week?
They should be doing that.
This should be really. Was Paul, Pauline was doing it here?
No, it was a different person.
When the other person was here, do you know what they were using for, had for time?
Um, I think it was usually like four or five hours.
A week.
A week, I mean, cause this big room takes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, I feel like if we can kinda like nail it down, because, you know, it could, you could spend a lot of time.
Oh, yeah, I think here is less than what the armory will be, cause it's such a bigger space, but for now, I mean, we're not.
Yeah.
They definitely need, and they take care of the bays themselves, right, you guys sweep out the.
So it shifts this area.
Their meeting rooms in the hallway, and.
And the bathrooms and.
Put your foot down with the other one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
I think he'll do a good job too.
Good. Alright.
So how many hours did you?
Let's see.
Let's go to forty-five.
Ten?
Well, maybe not ten, for here, five, yeah, I'd say another five down there would be.
We'll, yeah.
Oh, let's say to start out, and then say, how are you doing with the time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you finding you're not having enough?
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly.
He's pretty honest, though.
Alright.
Okay.
Anything else?
The only other thing is, is, um, apparently they've given us the opportunity to pick out either, um, the ninth or the twenty-third for the village joint meeting. What you guys in preference?
I thought we had down the twenty-third in.
We said November, but let them choose, and so then they said, well, it doesn't matter to us, whichever.
I cannot the ninth.
Twenty-third, that's over by Christmas, so to speak.
You can do the ninth, I just won't be there, totally fine, have at it. Have at it, um, and the twenty-third I can.
What day is that, to Tuesday?
They're Tuesdays, they start at six-thirty.
Is there anything pushing that we need to go to the ninth, or can we wait to the twenty-third?
Let's go to the twenty-third then.
That way you waited to slot, right?
Yeah.
What time do they start, Billy Joe?
Six-thirty, at the, it's gonna be here, actually, I'm sorry, not at the village, as they said, because of the amount of people.
Anything else we know of?
So I'll move to, oh, I'll move to.
Been moved and seconded that, uh, we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?